Temperatures will be cooler than normal this time of year with highs generally in the thirties.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, February 22nd, 2017 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with approval of minutes for February 8th. Anybody had a chance to look them over?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have Greg approving and Scott seconding or making the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Since I listened in, I'll say, yeah, it sounded like that. Okay. Is there any correspondence from staff?
No, nothing from staff.
Anybody else? Any correspondence? Okay, we're at item number four, moving along. Transportation Commission meeting report by Joel.
The Transportation Commission last met on February 9th. A lot of the meeting was talking about snow routes. The designated snow routes through the city. They were designated as snow rats half a dozen years ago at least, and they were the priority routes for the plows to get cleared first, and they're sort of spread throughout the city. And it gives the mayor and council the possibility of declaring a snow emergency, which would strip parking to allow better access by snow plows. The snow emergency has never been declared in the years since, and came close a couple times, but has not been declared. Much of the discussion centered on whether Blaine Street should be added, not Blaine, should be added to the route. It's quite a distance between Blaine and Mountain View, and the Transportation Commission eventually supported the idea that Blaine should be added. Part of the issue, a lot of the discussion centered on the fact that snow routes also are part of the agreement is that the city, and it falls to the Parks and Rec Department, to clear sidewalks. And that is currently stressing the availability of hardware and manpower in Parks and Rec to do the current set of snow routes. And worrying about what the additional stress of declaring a few more blocks. But on balance, the Transportation Commission supported adding that to the route. We also had a presentation talking about capital projects that related to transportation that the city is going to be engaging in over the next year. The two that stick in my mind is an additional project on Third Street, I believe, which will extend from the Third Street project that was done last summer further to the west. There's some additional connections of plumbing underneath.
One thing about it is the road's already broken up, so they won't have any trouble breaking them. The end.
That was part of the discussion. Apparently, there was some settling that occurred there. But there's likely to be some further closure of Third Street this next summer for that project. And the other projects that are coming close are some additional or some work on Sixth Street, basically between, I guess, between Jackson and campus. It'll be some, well, includes some reconfiguration of the weird crossing lanes.
Oh, alignment. That goes all the way back to the city.
Yeah. Where Sixth Street crosses Jackson. So we will again have a summer of, you can't get there from here.
Joel, when you talked about Blaine, did the discussion of the fact that the sidewalks on Blaine are right up against the curb, is that something that was part of the conversation?
Well, that was not necessarily part of the conversation. One of the relevant points, people were, you know, there's some concern over whether it's an appropriate city responsibility to clean sidewalks.
Aren't we a multimodal city?
Yeah, well, yeah.
A bit from the pedestrian.
Complete streets. But my memory of when the snow routes were originally proposed was that there is a considerable concern amongst the landowners along the snow routes, based on some recent experience, that when the city aggressively plows the streets, the snow gets pushed over on top of sidewalks. And I think that the inclusion of sidewalk responsibility on the part of the city was part of the compromise that allowed a lot of the adjacent landowners to buy into it. If the city's going to have to clean it off, why maybe more careful in the snow plowing?
Well, I ask the question because if you look at Sixth or Third, or pretty much, D's a little different, but when the plowing comes, you've got five to seven feet of space to put the snow. But on Blaine, you don't have that. So in the wintertime, walking on a sidewalk on Blaine can be pretty tricky. Or else, because I drive it so much, my heart goes out to many of the people on Blaine that are struggling to, cleaning a sidewalk isn't that easy.
Well, three of us live on Orchard Avenue, and Orchard Avenue is another where there's no treeline between sidewalk and street. That's part of, we're well aware of the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That gets a lot of kids' traffic, you know, because of Lena Whitmore.
And that was part of the logic of including it, as well as the fact that the sidewalks on Blaine are notoriously a problem.
And it did seem to me, too, that, well, we just haven't had this winter for a few years. I can hardly remember the last time we had it.
I think it was '95, '96 that we had one.
It was a long there when we had, we had about 100 inches total through the winter, and we've only had half that so far. And that was the winter that stimulated the development of the snow routes ordinance.
Okay, thank you. That sounds like an active commission for lots of issues going on. All right, we come to item five, which is open microphone, and it's an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission about matters that aren't on our current agenda or currently pending before us. And there is no one in the audience tonight to do that, but for those of you who might be listening, take note, this might be an opportunity for you to come talk to us in the future. All right, so now we're moving on to item six, which is approval of relevant criteria and standards for a 10-acre property proposed to be annexed into the city of Moscow and located directly north of Warbonnet Drive. And I guess we need to do this in two parts, first for the land use designation and then for the zoning designation, is that correct? So if everybody had a chance to look that over, and if anybody's prepared to make a motion regarding land use designation.
So move.
Okay, Rob, thank you.
Second.
Nellis, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Now, related to that, we look at zoning designation for the same parcel.
I move that we accept or adopt the relevant facts and conclusions.
Okay, Rob, thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
And thank you, Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right, Mike, it's in your lap now. We have item seven, 2009 Conference of Plan Updates, Chapter Two.
Okay.
So we had wrapped up Chapter One last time, and I think I had handed out just blank copies of Chapter Two for commissioners just to peruse on their own time. And what we've done is gone through and identified all the changes that we think we need to make within Chapter Two, and I'll just, like we had done in Chapter One, just go through these kind of section by section. A lot of the beginning of this chapter just gives some existing community character and land use, a little bit of the background that isn't going to change. You know, obviously, we're in the Palouse Prairie, and, you know, that's not going to change. We're predominantly surrounded by agricultural land, and that's probably not going to change anytime soon. So a lot of this, the sections at the forefront of the chapter, there aren't any amendments that need to happen with those. The first one would be education, which discusses just a lot of the education facilities within the city. So University of Idaho discusses WSU, as well as Moscow School District and some of the charter schools. Need to update some of the enrollment for University of Idaho. I think the last numbers per this previous comp plan were 2007, 2008 school year. So we're looking at 2016, 2017, down about 2,000 students here on campus. So that doesn't account for online enrollment, but just the on-campus enrollment is looking at 9,349, down from 11,562 in that 2007, 2008 timeframe. I think we'll probably need to update the faculty and staff member numbers there. I can't see as though those had probably stayed the same since that time period. So we're tracking down those numbers, and we'll have those probably next time. And then looking at, further on down, you're looking at Washington State University. They ended up gaining about a little less than 2,000 from the same timeframe. So 2016, 2017, current enrollment on campus is 20,043 students. We'll also have New St. Andrews College. We have their enrollment, 2016, as 132 students, which is down a little bit from 186. They have it broken down into full-time undergraduate students as well as eight graduate students. Moscow School District gained about 100, so they're looking at 2,500 for their enrollment this year. And then we don't have any other figures that need to change.
Does the district figures in any way include the, I presume it includes the...
Charter schools.
Charter schools, but probably not Logos, huh?
No, no.
Yeah, it wouldn't include the charter schools either. So it would just be in the Moscow School District itself. So the charter schools aren't part of the district. So they wouldn't, those numbers wouldn't be included. We have numbers here for the charter schools at the very end.
I see.
Yeah, we go through kind of the private schools and the charter schools. So Palouse Prairie isn't a new addition, so I believe they were created in 2008, 2009 timeframe, so they weren't, I remember at the time, I think they were trying to amend at the last minute to get into that comp plan, but weren't able to. So we'll include them, since they've been established and up and running for eight, nine years, and specify that they're K through eight school, and their enrollment's about 165. And that was in the 2014, 2015 school year. We state St. Mary's Catholic School, private school, grades one to six. And then Logos School is private classical Christian K through 12 school. And then their 2014 enrollment was 360. So updating those numbers. And then we have, the next section up would be the housing section. So the last figures that we had were a mixture of the 2000 census and then 2008 American Community Survey. So we're going to update that with the 2015 American Community Survey, which is the latest census document that's available that gives population housing statistics for Moscow. So we would increase from 8,040 housing units to 10,151, and that was from the 2000 census. So we have 15 years of growth. We're going to increase about 2,000 housing units within that time. States that does not include group living quarters such as dormitories, fraternity, sororities. And then the 2000 census numbers say that 3,914 individuals were housed within the dorms on campus. And then we'll update 2015 housing units, so we've got the 10,151 units. And then you got that broken down a little bit more, so 3,786 were single detached units, so single-family homes. And then they have it broken down even further to 627 attached single units, so townhomes. That could be twin homes as well, could be condos. You know, I think they have it broken down in the single family with condos as well. So we've got quite a bit of a jump on that. If you recall, we had the townhouse and twin home ordinance that was approved in around 2008, 2009, and we've really seen a jump in the number of twin homes and townhouses built in the community. And so that would account for a lot of the attached single-family units. And then an update for duplexes, those increased a little over 100, 140 units. Mobile homes went down a little bit for this census, and then 4,338 units were attached multifamily units, and that's up pretty substantially. There's about 3,000 in 2000, and we went up about 1,300 since then.
Wouldn't all that breakdown be easier to read if it were included in the table?
Or in the table of its own.
As subsets, breakdowns under the major categories with subtotals?
Yeah, I could do, yeah. I think they've got similar information here in this table. They just, you know, they're quoting 2000 census, all the figures here, and then they go into a little bit more detail with the more recent 2008 census. And so it would just be updating that. I mean, I could certainly look at putting it in more of a table form.
To me, it's hard to read in the text.
I would agree with that, and I just wonder if there's, I don't know if somebody in Ag Econ or somebody over in your part, or a one-page description of what these, what changes in numbers, both in housing and in people, what it meant. I mean, we all can read these figures and try and figure that out for ourselves, but I'd be really, I'd encourage some kind of an errata sheet or something that said, well, what did these, what does this look like? We see Washington State, of course, growing, and I suppose we didn't really report on, or does that come at a different point for Schweitzer? Schweitzer and Washington State are probably the two things that have grown in the region. And for some reason, we're dreaming that University of Idaho would grow. We hope it will, but I was just wondering.
We list major employers, and then the approximate number of employees. Can't recall if that's in Chapter One or further on.
Somebody that's used to thinking about these things are probably smarter than me, certainly, to just analyze what it...
Well, are you thinking about summarizing with the growth rate between 2000 and 2015 if it were part of the chart, and it just shows a growth rate of 1% per year or whatever it is?
So you're thinking different categories of housing units?
Yeah.
And how their growth?
It certainly helps with planning. I mean, you know, in terms of what our land use price was going to be and what zones, etc.
There's less growth there than I might have, would have guessed.
Yeah. But where is it growing more than others, you know?
The change in, the change in the different categories is interesting, too, because you've got, you know, 600 odd more total units, but when you look at where it breaks down, it's not a uniform growth among categories.
Right, right. Each one would be different.
Trends over time.
Well, and I'm just, one, a little tiny question that, you look at, say, mobile homes, okay. I don't think mobile homes are as popular these days because I think we're offering more twin houses or smaller units that probably fulfill something closer to what those mobile homes might have fulfilled, and yet we're not, you have to just think about that to get to the, what we were just told here.
Well, part of this is how accurate the census numbers are over time. I mean, you look at the two-family count, and we're down 100, you know? Those duplexes just didn't disappear. I mean, there's probably a portion of them that ended up converting from a duplex to a twin home, because then they could, you know, you end up increasing value because you could sell your side as a single family.
So it isn't counted differently than two things that are bought?
Yeah, a twin home would be, it looks like a duplex.
That's why I'm saying that a little description of this and an evaluation of these figures, I think would be useful to us and to council, I would think.
Well, maybe two-family dwelling and then two subcategories under that, to reflect the addition of twins.
I have a hard time believing that many duplexes changed.
Well, and part of this is, you know, the census had an issue with their housing start formula and calculations, and, you know, 2000 census, they had everybody going around with surveys to get all this information, and so they changed in 2010 the way they do things and changed some of their formulas to come up with these. You know, what we were doing in 2008 to come up with this number was relying on the population or the, you know, the census estimate, and that was extrapolated off of the 2000 census. And so they would, you know, typically take the number of housing starts and extrapolate that out into whatever the number was. And obviously, you know, there was some type of error previously with that because the new number that they have is 878.
Yeah.
So, you know, we may end up trying to figure out a pattern which is opposite of what reality is, just because of the numbers, or we have an issue with the census numbers.
So you're saying that the numbers may not support too much more analysis?
Yeah.
Well, okay, you could say that.
Okay.
I mean, everything else seems to be consistent. It's just that, yeah, I mean, that's one of the glaring ones, is just the two-family dwelling. But we have had a lot of conversions from duplexes to twin homes, and, you know, that plays into that, but not, I don't think we've had 100. So we have some type of, you know, Census Bureau inconsistency there.
Inconsistency. Yeah. Well, it must be really hard in a student population census.
Yeah.
Because who really, you know, how do you really determine who's permanent?
So then we go on to just update, you know, from 2000 to 2015. We had a, you know, previously, 43.8% of the housing stock was owner-occupied. Now it's a little bit less, down to 40.1% of city's housing stock is owner-occupied. And then, so that would mean that went up from 56.2 renter-occupied to 59.9 renter-occupied. So a slight increase in renter-occupied units. And then the rest of the section on housing doesn't really need to change. Housing demand, just looking at the population forecast, I think we had looked at that in Chapter One, just updating the current number, 25,060 people in 2015 to approximately 28,760 by the year 2030. And we were just using that linear projection in order to arrive at that number. And then we have the average household size that's been amended slightly with this American Community Survey. It was previously 2.25 people per household, now it's 2.23. So pretty consistent with what we had before, just a slight reduction there. And then we have just a projection of the number of housing units by 2030, and would require a total of, we have previous projection of 14,116, that's been revised to 11,811 housing units, which is 1,660 additional housing units, or 110 housing units per year to meet the housing needs for the current future residents. So we'd just be updating those. And then it goes through certain vacancy rates, 2015 American Community Survey. We had previously a 3.8% vacancy rate, and now that's down to 2.6% vacancy rate with this recent survey, and that's the rental housing units. And then a lot of this, of course, depends on future enrollment of the U of I, and that there continues to be potential to provide additional apartment units within the city. And then we just have some language that we're just, you know, it's kind of redundant, we're just deleting that.
Just a question on the side. It just dawned on me that years gone by, even on this commission, we didn't have the skill that you've got. Now, you've got this as a malleable document, don't you, this comp plan?
Sure.
I mean, imagine us when we wrote, did the plan back in the 80s. It was typed, and when you tried to change it. So, but you've got, are you the only guy that can change this?
Well, it's, we have it all in InDesign, right? So it, but we only have a certain number of licenses within our department. So, yeah, right now, I am the only guy that can change it, just because I've got the program, but, you know, it's...
But we wouldn't want too many people.
Yeah. But it's not as easy as Word. So you could just go in and track changes in Word. It automatically strikes what you delete and underlines what you add. InDesign doesn't work that way. You have to actually go in and hit Strike Through, and then go in and hit Underline for all the stuff that you want to add.
I see.
So it's a little bit tougher, but, I mean, we don't have...
But is it your intention that after we go through the review, that you would, you'll have a new document then? And will it, is it your, is it the city's intention to print up a few documents that can be in hand, or will it just be...
Yeah, I think that every commissioner had a, you know, hard copy, and so once we adopt, you know, revised comp plan, we certainly can print, you know, new copies for everybody.
Sometimes the new world's really nice.
Makes it more efficient sometimes, that's for sure. And then the next section we come to is affordable housing, just updating kind of the median price of the average home in Moscow, which is, surprise, gone up, you know, since 2007. So with the last numbers, about 200,000 was the average price of the house. 2016, that number's risen by about 50,000, and now the median price is 248,500. So, you know, obviously, that's in excess of what's considered affordable for somebody with a median income level, so...
So I have a question because we're comparing, I mean, some years we have 2015 data, some we have 2016, some maybe 2017. I'm thinking, I know the U of I's enrollment is back up, for example, over 10,000 again, whatever it is, 11 something. So is it relevant to include the 2015, or is it better to update it to what it currently is?
Usually, it's, we update it to whatever the most recent is.
Yeah, okay.
So like the, you know, American Community Survey, we're still on 2015 numbers. 2016 doesn't come out until later this fall. So we won't be able to update those. Enrollment, Ryan contacted U of I and should have got those figures. We'll have to take a look at it to see...
I'm just going to go with it from the paper, but it was up.
And I think that since we're only halfway through the semester, that we're just going off of what the, you know, total year, last year was. And I think that we should be able to update that come May.
Yeah.
And with the... And with, you know, current enrollment for this year. So, yeah, it's whatever the recent number is, 2016, you know, obviously we haven't gone all the way through 2017 yet, so we're relying on that 2016 number as the average selling price of a home.
And, yeah, and real estate's taken a bump in the last two years, bump up, I mean.
And then the rest of this chapter, we have, just talks about, you know, affordable housing options. We did have this statement at the very end saying zoning can be amended to require the provision of affordable housing within new development, a technique that is often called inclusionary zoning. Well, this has proven to be a legal tax in Idaho, so you can't require inclusionary zone, you know, inclusionary housing, inclusionary zoning. It was 2008 where there was a couple Supreme Court cases, and so shortly after we adopted this comp plan is when the Idaho Supreme Court ruled on, one was in McCall that required inclusionary housing, affordable housing within all new development, and so that was declared by the courts to be an illegal tax, and it wasn't allowed in the state statutes, and that's why it's, it's an illegal tax. And so, we can't do that until the state puts that into the statutes saying we can.
And do you think that, that's a state-specific thing, I presume?
It is.
I mean, I've been, Seattle has been doing this for years.
It is, yeah, yeah. It's just that the state doesn't give us the mechanism to allow for inclusionary zoning.
Well, I'm not surprised.
Well, the real issue you run into is a lot of the resort communities, so that's why McCall, you know, wanted to do it, because the cost of housing is so exorbitant there that the working class.
Any resort community is really in trouble to find their places.
Yeah, yeah, so it's you, Sun Valley, Ketchum, those communities where it really becomes an issue, even Coeur d'Alene, so. And then at the end of the section, it kind of goes through options of community housing development organizations, and land trusts, and ways of creating affordable housing within the community. We have created in 2009, one of the goals of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission was to create a spin-off of that group of the Community Housing Development Organization, or the CHODO is the acronym for that. They created the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust in 2009, and their goal is to create affordable housing within the community, and so they've been, you know, slowly purchasing property and developing houses that are restricted to, you have to qualify, you have to meet a certain income for a family to qualify to purchase the house, and I believe they had just have their first house on the market on Morton Street within the last month. So, you know, they've got that up and running. Nils Peterson is the leader of that group, the executive director, and so we'd just be updating this section to reflect that, that group's activity. We have a section on home occupations, shortly after we had the comp plan adopted, we went in and one of the implementation actions was to look at inserting home occupations within the code. Previously, we did have some type of home occupations, but it was onerous, requiring you to go through a conditional use permit for, you know, if it was somebody just working in their basement, you know, in their office of their house, with nobody coming to the house and no employees, just, you know, over the computer, we'd still require them to have a conditional use permit. And so, it was about 2008, shortly after this was approved, that we ended up going in and creating two categories of home occupations, which allowed, you know, that commercial, limited commercial activity to occur, just to make sure it was compatible with the surrounding neighborhood as well. So we, we had the two different categories. One requires you to go through a conditional use permit if you have employees up to two, or if you have people coming to your house, so you have some type of onsite customer service. The other one where you're just working from a home office and there's nobody coming or you're not employing anybody that doesn't live in the house, those are just allowed by right. So, we'd just be updating this section to reflect what we had done. We have the section on historic districts, we have Fort Russell Historic District and a little bit of a flux right now, just because it's tied up with the State Historic Preservation Office. The council, you know, Historic Preservation Commission had worked for the last two, three years on revising the district boundary, boundary and updating the contributing and non-contributing properties within the district, and we had completed all of that work and shipped it off to the state, and they had tentatively approved that, or approved it with conditions, saying that we had to go back and document all the accessory structures within the district. So, commission's currently working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to get that approved by, I guess, the state, and then on to the feds, and have everything, everything done by the time we wrap up the end of the comp plan review, and then we can just update the boundary and, you know, update the language here. I haven't done it yet, but I was planning on going in and putting a new map in there, and I think we can probably come up with some better pictures than, you know, this one, it's blocked by trees, power pole, this one, Shield, Shield House.
I can give you a bunch because I took them for our key.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then same with the downtown district, I don't think there's much updating that needs to occur, but I think we can come up with, you know, some better pictures of the Moscow Hotel and some of the other buildings downtown, so I figured we, you know, while we're doing it, update those images. And then we go through the urban renewal districts within the city, Althoris needs some updating just because it was recently closed in 2015, so just some slight changes to the wording at the very beginning, and then just at the end reflecting that the district was closed in 2015, but there are some remaining lots that are available for development that are being held by the Urban Renewal Agency. So, just a little bit of updating there. A little bit of updating in the entrances and corridors section, as you recall, there was a council goal a few years ago about improving the aesthetics of the entryways and corridors along the major highway entrances and corridors in the city, and that's progressing, and so we will just end up, you know, University of Idaho ended up improving their intersections of the, the major entryways. I don't know what they, Greenhouse Street, not sure where that was previously, and Peterson Drive, the ones are Line Street, Stadium Drive, and Perimeter Drive. You recall the new kind of brick entrances that they had developed, and they'd taken out the temporary signs on those locations and developed pretty attractive entrances. So just updating that to reflect that. And then, further on in Chapter 3, we go through proposed improvements to the entrances and corridors, so we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that council goal of improving the entryways and corridors in that section, so. This is probably going to be the, kind of the major point of discussion in this chapter, and it's the land use designation of neighborhood conservation. So I think maybe last time or the time before, we had talked a little bit about what we wanted to do with the neighborhood conservation designation. You know, this is primarily all the areas you see in gray on the screen, so, land use designations really direct what the zoning is in a lot of these areas. And so, every property within the city has to have a land use designation, as well as the properties within the area city impact, so whenever we annex a property, you know, we review the land use designation and then usually rezone it to what's consistent with that underlying land use designation. What the neighborhood conservation designation says is, it's intended for those existing neighborhoods, so the ones that have already been developed, and then it goes on to say that there should be neighborhood-specific zoning districts that need to be established that would describe prevailing lot sizes, permitted uses, and still allow for improvement or expansion of existing development. And, you know, we've had some challenges just because it doesn't give you a whole lot of direction on what the uses should be, it just says that, you know, it should be conserved in some way, and usually we don't have vacant lots in, in those designations. So, you know, we had the old Windfall Hills, which is the current Harvest Hills here, east of Mountain View, that we ran into issues with because I think in, around that timeframe, there was a plat that was, I guess, went through preliminary approval and never went through final approval, and, and so, we just assumed that it was going to go through final approval, and that was going to be a neighborhood that looked similar to the Rolling Hills and the Mosher Estates, to the north and to the south, and we ended up with a neighborhood conservation designation, and it was, you know, didn't give us a whole lot of direction as far as what would be appropriate for a rezone on that property. So, but usually it's for just developed areas, so, you know, we, obviously going back through since that had changed on that portion of the property and got redesignated as auto-urban residential, and suburban commercial for the neighborhood business zone, we wound up having to change that as well as the remainder, remainder of the vacant land. But, you know, thinking about that designation, I don't know why, so we have zones right now that all these subdivisions were developed under, and a lot of the newer subdivisions meet all the minimum lot sizes and widths and setback requirements, and so, you know, those don't make a whole lot of sense, like, you know, the old R1 zone over here, where we have Conestoga, Victoria, all the Rolling Hills designations, you know, subdivisions over here that are currently in neighborhood conservation, those were all developed within the last 20 years, and so they, they all meet the requirements of the R2 zone. Pretty much everything east of Mountain View is all R2, and it's developed, and we don't have very many, if any, non-conformities with lot sizes or lot widths, and so, you know, why we would have to look at creating a new zone when we already have a zone that fits, you know, is a little bit of a quandary. So I think that, you know, what we would, when we reviewed this, these areas, what we would propose to do is just take those out of neighborhood conservation and reassign what the, you know, consistent land use designation would be, which would be the yellow auto-urban residential. So, you know, we look at cleaning up all those areas with auto-urban residential, we'd have to take a look at, you know, that, that would be the question, you know, in the city core, we have a lot of areas in Fort Russell that look very similar, but you have zones that are different in each ones. And we've done a lot, you know, I think that in all the code amendments we've done over the last five, 10 years, to provide more flexibility to people with non-conforming structures and non-conforming lots and setbacks, and, you know, I think that we don't have the problem that we did maybe at one point in time, so we have, you know, we reduced setbacks, we, now we measure from the back edge of the sidewalk for the setback as opposed to the, the front property line, and so that's, you know, allowed for a lot of, you know, expansions of existing buildings, as long as they're consistent with the, you know, the typical building wall on that street. We have the alternate front yard setback that you can apply, which lets you average the setback of the two primary structures on either side of the house. Now we've got the, you know, another alternate front setback which lets you take the, you know, 60%, the average of, if there's more than 60% of the structures on one side of the street that you're looking at doing an addition on or building a house, if more than 60% don't meet the current setback, you're able to average those out to get you another alternate front yard setback. So, there's two, three ways of, you know, giving some flexibility about the front yard setback. We just approved the non-conformity change to the ordinance which allows you to do some expansions over, off of non-conforming structures, maybe they don't meet the setback requirements. Well, you can go through a conditional use permit in order to expand and use the same set, you know, non-conforming setback with the addition, so I think we've taken care of a lot of those. We've reduced the, the setback requirement for accessory structures, and so if they're 200 square feet or less, they can go right up to the rear inside property lines. If they're over 200 square feet, we've recently, it's just a five-foot setback, but we've recently, with the ADU ordinance, increased the plate height from 10 feet to 14 feet, so, you know, that gives you some flexibility there, just along with a non-conformity section. You know, I think that, and then obviously if the, the house is destroyed by fire or other natural disaster, they can rebuild what's part of that as well. And so, you know, I think we've done a lot of things that have provided quite a bit of flexibility, so I don't know if, that it's necessary, you know, in that review of going back and, and inventorying all of the kind of non-conformities within these areas, and then developing specific zones for those. So, that's where, you know, after reviewing it and looking at all the things we've done, that's pretty much where we ended up as far as, you know, looking at moving forward, and, and I think what we would propose is to strike the neighborhood conservation and just go back through and see if we can't redesignate with, you know, we've got quite a few designations right now, even with striking the neighborhood conservation, so, you know, we probably look at these areas, redesignating, redesignating those to more of an urban residential designation, which would be your, you know, R3, R4 typical neighborhood. So, we could, you know, certainly go through and look at striking the neighborhood conservation and, and showing you what that would look like with a, with a redesignation to one of the other designations that we have in the comp plan. So that, you know, certainly like to hear some input, but that's, that's pretty much what we arrived on when we reviewed it, so.
I've certainly always found neighborhood conservation confusing, and I like what you're proposing.
And then this gets to the end of the section, and we have, you know, the goals and the objectives, and then we have the implementation actions. We, these are, you know, the one, implementation actions that we've already accomplished that we can just strike from the list or maybe reword. We have developed accessory dwelling units such that they will not interfere with the character and function of the neighborhood, so, you know, with the ADU ordinance being approved and allowed pretty much every residential zone, we've, you can strike that one on the list, off the list, because we've accomplished that.
Have we had any more approved?
I don't know how many I had last time I reported, I think we have four, yeah.
I think we had three.
Yeah, I think we have, we have four, and then we have somebody that I've been talking with that is looking at doing, doing one, so we'll probably, within the next six months, have another one, so. And then implementation action, under special areas and sites, we had the legacy crossing action to create appropriate zoning and design guidelines to further the goals and intents of the Urban Renewal Agency, so enhance that connection between the university and downtown. We've done that with, you know, 2010, 2011, when we rezoned it to urban mixed commercial and we developed the design guidelines and those got adopted, we can strike that one off the list as being accomplished. And then, this one pertains to a wayfinding program, so Public Works had developed those nice historic signs in the downtown historic district as more of a pedestrian and motorist scale wayfinding to provide directions to parking and other information in the downtown area, which are really, you know, we think are really nice. So, we can, you know, strike that one off the list. I know that they do have a little bit more work to do as far as points of interest, you know, I think they were going to have some, you know, more of a motorist scale pointing it to U of I and some of those, you know, Historic Society and parking, so the typical sign, blue signs to say parking, and then U of I is going to, I think, going to be a gold sign, but they were planning on putting those on some of the roadways, and so that'll probably be the, the second part of, of that project, but I believe that, talking about the last, that should happen in the next, up to the next summer, so we should be able to strike that one from the list. And that's all I have for Chapter 2.
Any comments? Commissioners, nice work, it looks like.
There is a, I think there's one, in the preservation mode, there is one unit that probably can be added, there's a house, a snow house out on the, and is that outside of the city limits though?
Yeah, that's the one on the south?
Yeah, it's a one on, yeah, it's outside city, isn't it? So we probably wouldn't put it in.
Yeah.
Okay. It's about the only newer one that is, that I know of that.
Yeah, that's right across from Mr. Cabinet, right?
Yeah.
Oh, right. Okay, so, so what will happen next time you'll bring this?
Next time I will have a, I'll give you a copy in legislative format so you can go through and, and look at all the changes, and if there's anything else. I hope to have the map completed, so I'll go through and. I hope to have the map completed, so I'll go through and change the land use designations to, you know, what we think they should be, and I'll hope to have that brought back so we can review that and look at that in more detail.
Yeah, great.
And then Chapter Three, so probably start, you know, looking forward to Chapter Three, which probably take a little while to get through, it's the transportation chapter, so.
Yeah, there we go. All right, so moving on to Item Eight, the Use Table Ordinance.
So I think last time we had gone through, I didn't have, I think I had Chapter One in a legislative format and then Two through Four, all the content was there, but it wasn't in legislative format. I think that legal is still putting the final touches on the legislative format, so I don't have those yet. I'll hope to have those at next meeting, but there were some blanks that we had before. Chapter One was fine, I think that we had all of the text that we needed there, we were moving the definitions from the end of the zoning code to Chapter One, and that was the primary change, but the majority of Chapter One was staying the same. We were going through and moving a lot of the sections within Chapter Two from other chapters and inserting them into Chapter Two, and then going through the purpose statements of all the zoning districts within the code. We didn't have really any fill-in-the-gaps on Chapter Two, but Chapter Three, where we talked about the land use table and some of the permitted land uses, we do have some gaps to fill in, and so I had gone through and started to write some of those. And so I figured we would go through, we've got permitted land uses as the name of the chapter, and then it goes into interpretations of the land use table, so explaining what the acronyms mean, the terms, and so, you know, at the very beginning, we would have an introduction of the land use table, we'd end up calling, you know, labeling it below, but then we go through, you know, list the uses allowed within the base zoning districts, each listed use is defined in City Code Section 4-6-4-1-6 definitions, so it points you to where each of those terms is defined, and then we go into interpretations of the land use table, and then we would, you know, this would be what P means, what PA means, what C means, and then if you have the, you know, footnotes listed within the certain uses, you know, where to go to define what that means. So under permitted uses, just wanted to make sure that P in a cell indicates the use is allowed by right, without special conditions other than those imposed upon other uses by right in the district, permitted uses are subject to all other applicable regulations of this code. Permitted accessory uses in a cell are those allowed only if accessory or incidental to a permitted principal use. An accessory use is generally designed or employed in conjunction but subordinate to its primary use. And so, you know, it's, we had a question at one point in time whether or not you could just have an accessory use on a piece of property, and, you know, our interpretation's always been no, because you have to have a permitted principal use before you can have an accessory use. So that's, I think, what this last sentence will help reinforce, that no, you can't just have a garage on a single piece of property, it has to have a house on there before you can have an accessory structure. Conditional uses, C in a cell indicates that in the respective zone, the use is allowed only if reviewed and approved in accordance with the procedure of City Code 4-8-4, conditional uses, they're subject to all other applicable regulations of the code. And then we go on to state that a C designation does not constitute an authorization or assurance that such use will be permitted, rather each conditional use permit application shall be evaluated against the relevant criteria and standards contained within the section of City Code, may be approved or denied as the findings indicate appropriate. So I think I had seen that in maybe Boise's ordinance, and I thought that was, you know, probably a good thing to put in there, just to further explain conditional use permit and how it's evaluated against the relevant criteria and standards, whether or not it's approved or not. So I had put that in there. And then use is subject to specific requirements, so we have the little bullet or footnote next to the P or PA or the C, just indicating that the use is subject to specific requirements contained within the footnotes at the end of the use table, and then explaining that if it's a blank cell, it indicates that it's prohibited use. And then after the use table, we have specific use standards, and these were migrating all over from Chapter Twelve. We still needed to go through drive-through facilities as well as educational services, which are our new term for schools within the zoning code.
I had a question about that, because I was trying to talk remotely last time, and I didn't, you know, I thought it might be hard for people to understand, but there was a discussion about daycare facilities and the confusion, and there was some confusion. And I was wondering if we could differentiate by saying childcare facilities, because there are also daycare facilities for adults, and I know, you know, they're sort of in that preschool childcare kind of world of academia, they like to use child, because they're taking care of children instead of days, they like to use the word childcare. And I'm wondering if that would help straight, if we use that language, it would help alleviate some of the confusion with, but possibly adult daycare drop-off centers, et cetera. You know, I don't, I'm trying to remember the context of the discussion last time, but I remember there was.
I think we got it, so the new term, the two terms is going to be child daycare services.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that'll be what the NIACS term is referenced on.
Okay, good, you got it.
Should be good. So we're looking at drive-throughs, you know, this is something that we don't have a standard for, and it's primarily just number of queuing vehicles in a drive-through lane. And so it's been something that's been on the radar, and I think that, you know, the commission's discussed it quite a bit as far as Dutch Brothers and, you know, possible issues there. And so, you know, we thought when we were going through, and we have all these specific standards, and there's another page of them, that, you know, we only have drive-through facilities and educational services that we need standards for, and actually educational services, the schools, we would just be carrying that over from Chapter Six, and so that's really not recreating anything, it just, that refers to loading zones. So this is, you know, this is all currently under Chapter Six, but it would fit better within this section, so we figure we just take it, but there's no changes there currently. You're required to have a couple drop-off locations, and then you can provide them in a number of manners, there's three options, and so we'd just be carrying that over from Chapter Six and putting it in Chapter Three under this section. So really, the only changes would be through drive-through facilities, and so I had taken a crack at, you know, looking at what other, how other communities typically regulate drive-through service windows, and there's a lot of similarities to what they do, you know, usually they define a number, the number of spaces required for a drive-through window. It's usually around five for queuing, and then I did see one where it gave you a couple of options where you could, if there was two service windows, so you had a coffee stand, and there was, instead of just one window on one side, if they had two windows, one on either side, and multidirectional traffic, that you could reduce that to four queuing spaces in that circumstance, usually define the size of the space. 12 feet is our standard drive aisle width, and that seemed to be the common width for these queuing lanes. And so, you know, I put 12 in, 12 feet in width, and then 20 feet in length is the standard parking stall length, and so, you know, I thought that was suitable for the length of a standard automobile is 20 feet. Usually have a turning radius, and that's quite a bit less than our current turning radius in parking lots. I think we've got a 29-foot turning radius in our standard parking lot, so that, you know, gives quite a bit of flexibility as far as the turning radius. Demarcation, usually they want to see the drive-through lanes clearly demarcated with striping or curbing, and usually have a, kind of this token statement about additional queuing, the design signage or operational characteristics of the drive-through facility shall prevent or discourage vehicles from waiting for service on public sidewalks or streets. I think that's probably one of the major concerns with, you know, these establishments, is just that it's going to spill over on the street or, you know, cause some type of traffic issue from queuing up.
Have you paid any attention at all to the Dutch Brothers?
Sure.
Yeah, that was what sort of stimulated this dialogue a few weeks ago, or months ago.
It's a shockingly used place, and occasionally I'm so confused by it that I just race right on by to someplace that I can figure out.
Well, one problem is people stop on, they queue up on the state highway, I mean, you know, so we don't really have jurisdiction over that, but it's more of an enforcement issue than a planning issue, but, you know, it's what we decided when we were talking about it in that circumstance, or people crossing over the double yellow to get into, you know, so.
Yeah.
But we got correspondence about it, oh, a couple, probably three or four meetings ago, it was in late November, I think.
I must have missed that conversation, but it seems to be more popular than any other queuing up place in town.
It snakes around amazingly.
Yeah, it's an anomaly, I mean, you look at any of the other, you know, drive-throughs, and maybe there's three, four, five cars queued up at any time, but, yeah, you go by Dutch Brothers when they're having a sale or it's coffee day, and, you know, they've been coming in now to do traffic circulation plans. So engineering department requires them to, you know, they have companies that do these professional plans where they provide the signage and everything, so I think the last big sale they had, you may have noticed it was, you know, they were taking up a, the parking that was on Jackson Street, you know, we have some on-street parking, and the engineering had identified that as a lane wrapped around onto D and then went into the alley and then snaked around there, and so they had, you know, a traffic company do all the signage and everything.
Oh, I wanted to drive to another state, I didn't figure I could possibly deal with what was going on, people, cars going every which way, somebody's organized something there with a lot of cones.
Yeah, and so every time they have a big sale, they, you know, they need to come in and do one of those traffic circulation plans, and so, you know, it's taken, you know, taken us a few times to get it dialed in, but I think they've got it pretty well figured out now, I hope. And then landscaping, typically they have a landscape requirement, this is really just recognize, you know, any type of parking lot, we require a landscape buffer adjacent to the public right-of-way, so our, you know, we were going through our parking lot standards recently, we have our private group that's working on that right now that should be bringing that back to the commission here shortly, but this is just replicating what we currently have for the, what we currently have proposed for the external parking lot buffer, which is a buffer that's three feet in width and contains one tree, one and a half inch caliper every 40 lineal feet, and then one shrub every six feet. So this is really what's required right now, but it's nice to have it stated in here, so there's no, you don't have to go to multiple sections, and it's clear that there's some type of landscaping that's required. So I figured I'd entertain everybody with an image of Dutch Brothers here, so just to show you, you know, kind of the standard drive-through layout, they do have their aisle width at 12 feet, which is pretty common, and then this would be your standard car length, so this is 20 feet, and I think I've got it about at nine feet. But as you can see, this would be, there's room for six just right in their queuing area, not even taking any consideration, this area here. You know, all in all, if they were to come out towards the street, looks like they ended up, you know, there'd be about 13 cars, which is a lot more than you see at, you know, available at any other type of drive-through coffee stand, so just wanted to show you an example.
So what do they put in that coffee?
But, yeah, this would be, you know, they have the buffer shown right here, and so this is the only portion of the drive aisle that's adjacent to a public right-of-way, and so this would be the landscape buffer that they needed to install with the shrubs and the tree, and then this is really above and beyond what we require right now, and so they decided to, you know, do some landscaping island in the middle. They're required to have, you know, employee parking, even though there really isn't any walk-up or indoor seating or outdoor seating, other than, I think, a couple benches out here, and they do have a window where you can walk up from the street, but, yeah, we require some off-street parking for the employees and then an ADA accessible stall in case, you know, somebody with disabilities comes to the restaurant, so. All pretty standard, but this would meet our current, you know, what we propose for just the drive-through facility standards, they would meet all the requirements just with this standard design they have right here, but it'd be good to actually put that, you know, codify that in the code so we can have something to point to, instead of just saying, well, I think you need to have three, four queuing spaces, and, you know, it's nice to be able to point to the number of queuing spaces that they need to have in order to satisfy the requirement. So anybody have any questions on this one? Seen other jurisdictions require, require these landscaping areas, and so, you know, I didn't really feel that was, you know, appropriate to put in there and just, you know, let everybody decide on site-specific conditions in order to do that, but that was one other thing that was pretty free, was pretty common among other jurisdictions, was to require some type of demarcation as far as a landscape island in the middle, or it could just be curving, so it's maybe something else to think about, we can talk about it next time, certainly. That's all I have for changes with the use table. I'm hoping to have, like I said, hoping to have a legislative format next time, I don't think there's anything else other than, I was planning on looking at some different table styles, I think the commission wanted to look at a couple different styles next time, I haven't got to that yet, so hopefully we'll have that legislative format, we'll be able to look at the table again, I'll be able to come with a couple different versions of what it could look like, and then I think there's probably a few minor tweaks to the table, and we can discuss those next time, and then we'll have to integrate all the new NIACS definitions into the definition section, so hoping to have all that complete by next time, and we can go over that, so.
Great. And I, just for future topics as well, I ran into Les McDonald in the swimming pool swimming laps, and asked him if he could come at some point when we have some break in our future schedule to kind of summarize, really talk about the updates or the goals that have been realized in the 2011, I think they're both 2011 water and sewer plans, rather than a whole, you know, summarize it maybe more than we did with the transportation plan, but just give us an update on what the capacities are, what problems have been fixed that were pointed out in those studies, so we can have know what the context is. And so you probably know, looking down the road, what a good time might be for him to come, but.
Yeah, I think we have, we've got a few things on the horizon, we're going to have Harvest Hills coming in for a final plat, probably not this next meeting, but maybe the meeting after, second meeting in March, we're probably going to have Identity, the Plenary of Development at the South Cuplet, they'll be coming in for a final PUD, so.
So we're probably looking at April or May.
Yeah, we're probably looking at, probably April would be a good time to have him come in, so we could tentatively schedule, you know, pencil that in.
So since you know what's going to be in the queue, maybe you could take it from here in terms of.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so the last item on the agenda is the shared readings discussion, and I don't, you know, basically looking at articles that deal with sustainability strategies and how they might be incorporated into comprehensive plans, since we seem to talk about it in our, Chapter One of our plan, and I guess I wondered if people had had a chance to read it and what the takeaways might be for us and how they apply to our particular. might be for us and how they apply to our particular circumstances.
I think we're doing a good job.
That was the impression I had. We're doing a lot of the things that are mentioned.
I think we're doing a good job, yeah.
Well, one of the things that I always struggle with, and Nels mentioned it several meetings ago, that when you talk about neighborhoods, particularly as it relates to be able, being able to access grocery shopping, for example, within your walk or a bicycle ride. But your comment was Moscow is a neighborhood. I mean, and I used to spend, spend some time in Seattle in a community, downtown community called Belltown. And they probably have more people in three or four square blocks than Moscow does. So, you have the critical mass to support businesses that you would love to have in your neighborhood, but I, and I always struggle with that. And I do agree that we're really doing all the right things that we can for our neighborhood, but it's really hard to then look at some of these, everybody would love to have a mom-and-pop shop that they could walk to to buy some groceries, but there's no way that you can keep a business like that viable. So, we have to kind of work within.
Read between the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Right, at least, maybe more importantly, having grocery stores, et cetera, that you can access multimodally. I mean, I was thinking about when I was a student in Philadelphia and we had to catch a bus to get to any kind of grocery store because they just didn't have them in the inner city much. And we have the co-op and centrally located for most people can get to, and that's an example. There used to be a Safeway store originally, I guess, and then, you know, certainly other grocery stores on, that serve different compass sectors of town. So, that seems to work. So, yeah, that's, and I was, I guess, most intrigued by the importance of integrating land use and transportation decision-making. And we have these conversations with Joel, which is really helpful. And I was wondering, are there other ways that we can, and we all looked at the multimodal, we had a presentation on the multimodal plan, are there ways we can strengthen that relationship because they're so fundamentally interrelated? Would it be important, has there been a precedent in the past, for example, to meet with transportation once a year or something and, or have a joint meeting with, I don't know, or across boundaries with county, you know, in the regional planning context? I'm just, you know, throwing that out there as a.
I don't think we've had a joint meeting. Probably a good idea, but.
Scheduling might be difficult, but it seems.
I guess I still have difficulty applying the question of how you link land use to transportation to communities of this size. There's not a great deal that we can do about, that this commission can do or that land use planners can do about the ability of Moscow to provide adequate bus transportation. What can we do?
Well, and it's bicycling, it's walking, it's all.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're committed to complete streets. We're committed to all forms of transportation. That's certainly something we can do, but I think we are doing it.
Well, yeah, just like the new subdivision in the one behind our house. I mean, there's going to be bike lanes there and.
Yeah.
And where is that, Dennis?
Over off Orchard.
Peek-a-boo State.
Oh, okay, right, right.
But we need to be careful. When, it frustrates me when we confused by just having a presence of a bike lane, that means it's walkable or even bikable for that matter. Like, we have bike lanes that go all the way down the Pullman Highway, down to Walmart, but hardly anyone uses them properly and things like that because they can't get to, like, every side and things like that. So, like, we have bike lanes, but no one uses them.
Well, I think that the, at least from my point of view, in my riding in the summertime of the trail, is the giant solution. I mean, I'd ride an extra couple miles any time to be on a trail to go someplace. So, going out to the mall on my bike is something that I quite enjoy, but if it wasn't for the trail, I clearly wouldn't.
Oh, yeah.
So, no one, I don't care what you paint on the side of a four-lane highway, you're crazy if you take your. Right. So, it's been, the trail is, I can't imagine how much I appreciate what the trail groups have done because they've certainly enhanced my life a lot. But it is.
There are some dedicated bicyclists.
I'm fully, Howard doesn't understand that, but like going down Sixth Street, that's constant bike flow on that bike path, both ways.
But it's got that odd circumstance. I mean, I used to walk to campus rather than ride my bike, even though I could have gotten there fifteen minutes faster on a bike because of that stupid jog on Sixth Street that puts you, you know, coming, when you're going eastbound, you're in that middle lane where you're in no man's land because the drivers don't understand what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, that's pretty dangerous, yeah.
And it's so, and we're not allowed to ride on the sidewalks anymore. So, once that happened, I said, "Screw it, I'm going to walk," because it's too scary in that area.
You're right. There are parts of the city where biking is awesome, you know, but there are parts that need work because, me and my wife, we used to live on Baker. And, you know, biking to school from there, using the bike lanes that are present is just insanely difficult when you have that large student population, who is the population that bikes? You know, that's a very notable characteristic that they have. But, you know, there's some, there is room for improvement.
One says facts. And whether America will ever get there, you know, the things that Belgium and Holland does about providing real bike streets is a whole different level of accessibility. And, but both of those countries are, I mean, the whole country is more than a thousand people per square mile. So, that's what's hard, as we've talked about, goody, goody things. At least as a professor, I've talked to students for years about, oh, wonderful things to do. But this is a big country, you know, that we decide to go four hours or three hours away for skiing on one day, which is a pretty crazy thought. And so, then trying to come back to a local thing and say, "Well, we're going to make bicycles work." I think, I'm like you, I feel like our, we're probably over, we probably have better planning than a lot of cities of twenty-five thousand.
Absolutely.
I think we really have, at least I think, our staff's, I feel like our staff is quite good.
I would agree.
I agree.
But that being said, and that next business that you talked about, it'll be after I die, but as a city gets toward thirty, as a city gets toward thirty, thirty-five thousand, now you're going to have pods and the city's going to break up into more than one neighborhood. As long as you're in this sort of twenty thousand arena, you are a neighborhood.
Well, it depends on how land use and transportation integrate as you grow. And so, right now, I mean, and I think it was in the comp plan, there's no point in Moscow where you're more than two miles from anything else, which seems a little bit underestimated to me, but maybe so. But within this, at least within the city limits, so if we were encouraging more infill and less sort of development on the fringe, more compact development, then you could accommodate. You know, we're not that dense of a city. You know, we're pretty.
We're not, but we're pretty dense compared to, let's say, Boise. We're another, probably fifteen hundred people per square mile compared to Boise just because of the number of apartments and things that we do have. And I think, you know, the legacy crossing is a great opportunity for us, but it's just so, such a struggle to be in such a poor community. You know, that piece of land, if it was in a city, would have, they'd be building, there'd be four cranes on it right now.
Well, maybe people will get inspired by the one at the corner of Troy Highway and ninety-five, so.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
When they see that, other developers will say, "Oh, this work, this model works."
Encourage people, yeah. It's just a troublesome thing, you know. I go to another little town often, Park City, where there are vast numbers of millionaires and there's a crane, every three blocks is another crane happening.
Well, that's ski resorts, though.
That isn't Idaho and it isn't Moscow. And so, we, oftentimes, we ask ourselves to live up to ideas that were really not likely to be able to live up to.
Well, so what you're saying, I guess, is that you don't think there's anything, any areas we can improve when you look at this?
Well, I don't.
I mean, I agree that we're doing a lot of what's, you know, what's suggested, what do we strengthen? Or I guess the only thing that really surfaced in my mind was having maybe, in addition to Joel's regular reports, some kind of conversation with transportation and conversation with the county planning and zoning once a year or so, we kind of know what everybody's thinking, you know? I, I don't know.
I think that's a good idea.
Or even twice a year, being so bold.
We have had joint meetings with county planning, but not for a long time.
Yeah, not since I've been on this, but that hasn't been that long.
And our county events could certainly be more articulate than they have been when we have had them years ago. It's difficult. I mean, the change in mental condition, the minute you get past the area of impact is significant. And so, the county is, has a different concept in many, many ways. And until you get a county, I mean, we could talk about King County or Ada County, either one, but when you start getting thousands of people building out in Issaquah, then the county starts to have a different mental condition. But we don't have that and people love what we have in Idaho is that business to have a little standalone place in the trees somewhere.
I guess the question that runs through my mind occasionally is, you know, are we encouraging denser development or are we encouraging sprawl?
Right.
Or what would it look like to do one or the other? I guess the impression I have at the moment is that we have done some things which allow densification.
Like ADUs.
Yeah, but that, at the moment, it's pretty much laissez-faire. People, people come in with proposed developments and we consider them and usually approve them. I'm not sure that we do apply any type of encouragement, one way or the other. And I'm not even sure that we necessarily should.
Well, the emergence of twin homes as a more predominant house type than it was fifteen years ago or ten years ago is an example of densification right there.
You know, one of the, this is really a thorny issue because just a few months ago, we were considering a project that would have some densification and the neighborhood really kicked back.
They did, yeah. But that was in the most low-dense recent.
Right, right. So, I mean, it puts us in a difficult position because what ended up happening in that particular case is we didn't approve it, they went before council and, I mean, they had to rework it a little bit, but it was a real instructive moment and when you're trying to deal with some more densification and yet the neighborhoods just really kicked back. So, and I don't know what the right answer is, but.
Well, I think, at least an experience I've just had with a group, I took a group of people to New York City in October and almost none of them, except my wife, had been in New York City. No one had been to New York City. And they all went kind of tense with the sense, "This isn't going to be that much fun," but, you know, I said, "Don't worry, I can, I can, we can manage it." They came back almost to a person just falling all over themselves about how much fun they had in New York and how, but there is a sense, for those of us who live out here in the hinterland, that those people who live piled on top of each other are very ugly people and life is not good in an apartment or whatever. And so, those are, those are a lot bigger issues than planning and zoning. It makes it hard to deal with that mental condition. And why would you come to Idaho in the first place? You know, you didn't come because, for the same reason, you go to Brooklyn, you know? And so, I was surprised at the people, at their thought as we spent a week in New York. They were thinking, "Wow, this is a lot cooler than I thought it could possibly be." But I don't think that idea is shared across the board in most of our small Idaho towns, even though, even though here at the university, we might think we're a little bit more upbeat.
I occasionally feel a little bit hypocritical to talk in favor of densification when I personally live on and enjoy living on my half-acre parcel with a big garden of fruit trees.
Well, I, you know, teaching twenty-eight years and having my students do community projects all over the state and Washington and everywhere else, you don't go into a community using the word density. It's like, it's, people are allergic to that word. Instead, you start to think, when, somewhere in, I think it was in one of these articles that talked about seventy percent of people preferring to have a walkable neighborhood. You don't get a walkable neighborhood if you don't have some density. And, you know, I know every time my husband and I rent a VRBO somewhere, we look at whether it has a walkable neighborhood, if it's tied to anything. If you can't walk to a store, we're not going to rent it. So, it, you know, I think there is a cultural shift happening, you know, because of fitness, health, you know, that sense of connectivity.
Mini houses, mini farm.
And you don't, you don't sell it by saying, "We need more density." You sell it by, "We want walkable neighborhoods and we want linked neighborhoods, et cetera." And that, and with that comes some density to make it viable, so.
Which brings it back to the transportation question.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. They are.
If you use payers' cars, then that's what you're going to get.
Right, right.
Complete streets into account.
Again, we just chose a hotel in New York that we get it for. There weren't many, but we found one. But on the other hand, from our hotel, not that, and they provided free breakfast to us, which was pretty amazing for New York, but there must have been nine or ten coffee shops just in the block that we lived on with our hotel. So, if you think about a walkable community, well, my gosh, I didn't like the coffee that our hotel had. So, boom, I'm down the sidewalk, you know, five doors to get a cup of coffee in the morning and that's a walkable community. But, and I think that's, I think what you're saying is good.
And we're lucky we have the topography. I mean, we were just up in Rosslyn, Canada for the, for the long weekend and it's a walkable community maybe six months of the year, but it's just solid. And Pullman, we're lucky we have the topography that really, you know, can support the opportunity. And that's, and Pullman really struggles with that exactly, so that's.
But I think on the positive side, as we talk about these things, even to, as occasionally when we have groups of people, we just need to keep plugging away at it. And fine, it, so far, in the twenty years I've been on PNZ, when we talk about a little community. so far, in the 20 years I've been on PNZ, when we talk about a little community store, people go ballistic, you know, and you just have to keep talking about it.
Well, remember when they wanted to put one where Slurpf and Burp used to be, and it became some, a community center, because there was going to be a store there, and people reacted and pushed back. And, and now, so many, so much housing has developed around that. I wonder if it would have been heavily used if it had been some kind of store.
One of the things that I think could happen, we have chosen, or don't have the ability to move the high school, Logos is going to build a school, but as some of those institutional things find themselves out on the edge of town, they will start to encourage the neighborhood.
Or you'll get more kids driving to go to McDonald's and everywhere else, because they can't walk to downtown.
Look at Circle K when it was on Sixth Street, you know, that was there for quite a few years.
Lasted for maybe a couple of years.
Yeah, it was, yeah, that was there when I first moved here. I remember that now.
But whether, you know, we don't take, it seems too political to take the position that, yeah, the high school probably should be downtown, because if you want a walkable, if you want to teach children about walkability, what could be better than having the kids right here across the street, being able at lunchtime to run downtown and buy, and choose 30 or 40 different kinds of things for lunch, as opposed to the typical high school in the state of Idaho that has gone three miles outside of town.
And they have closed Champus for lunch.
You force every kid to drive to the school. And so, those are little things that, though, I think if we take the position that the high school should be in one place or another, then we get into a, a very serious discussion again. But there, that's an example, in my mind, of the children, the students, at least my son, when he went to the same high school and the kids there now, duh, at noon time, where they race off downtown into 16 different places to go grab a pizza or something for lunch.
Well, the other phenomenon, I think it's interesting, is, Nels and I, together or separately, must have done 10 studies of Sixth Street with our students over the years. And all of a sudden, stuff is happening on, on Sixth Street, and it's really providing this nice, this strengthening connection between the university and downtown that was always, you know, a void. And, and maybe that'll keep happening.
So, it makes walking from town to the university on Sixth.
Like the app, EW or something.
A fun thing to do. And, and that's something that I, you know, you just notice, at least in my living, and I lived in New York for one year, and you'd go out and go, let's go to dinner, and you might walk two miles to go to dinner just for fun, because walking in New York is just so much fun, you know? And so, but here, if you said, let's walk two miles.
It's nice. That's, that's exactly, my walk was, I went just under two miles from my house to the architecture building, and it's, except for that stretch along Sixth Street, when you, where it was really boring, and now is getting better, it was actually a pretty nice walk.
But I, anyway, those are things I think that we can.
So, I think we have a nicer, you know, a nice, there's more engaging, it's not a lot of retail, but it's interesting neighborhoods and downtown buildings.
Yeah, I've been, I just, I watch Sixth, I'm just like her, we've been teaching together for 25 years, and it seemed like it was kind of vacant 25 years ago. And now.
Well, just in the last two years, it seems like.
Well, you think about the things that have happened to get to that point. I mean, in the 70s and 80s, when they had the couplet, you know, put in the couplets and diverted it off of Main Street in 95, and the beautification and the local improvement district, you know, do the bulbouts and all the improvements downtown. I mean, a lot of this stuff takes time to come to fruition, and, you know, I think we're experienced a lot of the benefits of what they chose to do in the 70s and 80s to, you know, have a better community. And I, you know, had a presentation, and I think a lot of people throughout the state really look at Moscow's downtown as what they want to do. You know, you look at Lewiston, you look at Pullman, you look at Colfax, you know, all these smaller communities that have just issues with state highways running through their downtowns and what to do, you know, Sandpoint, what was that, was there? And, you know, it just takes a lot of planning and forethought, and then it takes a lot of time for things to happen. And I think we're starting, you know, and, you know, everything that's happening downtown, I think, is a result of a lot of that work that was done, you know, that, that long ago.
I have one other, I'll, I'll put one other little thought on the table in terms of, we talked about our budget and whether we could have any education or not.
Oh, right.
But, last time, but the Congress for New Urbanism that sort of focuses on the issue that we've just been talking about the last 15 minutes, is holding its annual conference in Seattle this summer. And it typically, they're in New Orleans, or Chicago, or Boston, and it costs you $500 just to get there. But, I'll bring some information in about it at the next meeting about the thing, because two or three of you might enjoy going to the, when it's so close in Seattle, though.
Could we get Jeff Speck to come and do a detour?
The only problem with Seattle is it's now as expensive as New York.
Well, maybe we could get Jeff Speck or somebody, you know, else from, in connection with that, to come over here and give a presentation.
Stop by?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would.
I'll, I'll bring in some stuff off the web about it, because I was thinking, as long as the conference is going on.
He went to Driggs.
Huh?
He went to Driggs in 2004. I, yeah, we had a, a conference there, and, yeah, he came. And, so, so if he goes to Driggs, he'd come to Moscow.
So, maybe we could sponsor something that would be a public event, that would be a way to talk about these issues as well.
Okay. Well, any other comments on this, or are we, have we exhausted?
Well, I, I think that we should pursue your idea about either joint meeting, and maybe it'd be hard to get transportation and the county add us together, but at separate times.
Right, at separate times.
Certainly, we ought to, we ought to continue to pursue that. I think it's a good idea.
Joel, do you want to send that fish out to the Transportation Commission and see if it's.
Fantastic, Joel.
Great. And, yeah, because I think we'd like to know more about the complete streets and where you're going with that, and other, other, other projects, so. Okay, well, I guess, meeting adjourned?
Great.
Thank you.